Will come to order, the city clerk will call the roll.
Ayello, Burmaster, Bittar, Carcone, Irvin, Beatrice, Colasimo, Testa, La Medical, Drutzy, all present.
Seize rights for the pledge allegiance, file plan of silence for deceased members of the county council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of this land, and to one nation, and to the great freedom and liberty of this world.
We have a special meeting tonight is to take a vote to reconsider the ordinance that was passed at our previous meeting to amend the composition of the Bureau of Fire from Chief Fire Marshal one to zero, Fire Marshals one to two. I think Joe Lapias sent a letter to everyone and also Udic Professional Firefighters Association, Mark Nicoletta, so all the council members should have their letters. We need a motion to reconsider by the majority and a second, then we will vote on the reconsideration.
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
Second. Votes please. So I am going, a motion to introduce proposed ordinance number fourteen.
You can, it's, you can make the motion to reconsider, or to commit is the first.
It's already been defeated, you made the motion to reconsider, it should be defeated and then a new piece should be introduced.
Roberts rules thirty-seven twenty-seven.
Because you can't reconsider it for a third time.
Hang on.
In the same legislative session.
That's according to our rules.
You can vote to change the discussion.
I mean, I'll, I'll reach our reconsideration, I mean, that's, this is under our code. It says after any question is decided by the county council, it shall be in order for any member of the council to be in the majority only to move its reconsideration at the same meeting. All subsequent meetings and motions for reconsideration are paused, that shall not be renewed a third time except if the bonding man was voted member of the county council. No question may be received, remainder of the council members terms, if it is represented and failed to be reconsidered as set forth.
It's not a third time, Melissa, it's a second.
My suggestion is, take this, you defeat it, if you want to introduce it, same piece, it's not the same piece, moving it down, reconsidering it for a third time, so it still needs to be reconsidered.
I don't see how that's.
So my, my suggestion would be to defeat it and then if you want to, whoever, reintroduce a new piece of it. So I'll make a motion to, to bring it down.
I'm, Joe, is that how?
Do we have a second?
Is that with this one?
A second.
Are we able to, Mr. President, are we able to take the floor for, are we able to take the floor for debate or to qualify our votes?
Yeah, you can.
May I have four?
I'm sorry, you.
They're gonna take, uh, we're qualifying our votes if you'd like. Qualifying the votes, I just wanted to explain my position on this. We are going back and forth a lot, I've heard, a big reason why I did vote for this, I know we have a new union president and I was grateful to speak with you this week, Mr. Nicoletta, and learn more, you know, from my position, we were already in conversation with this back in May, so a lot of my reason for voting last time is because I remember those conversations. I, hearing more makes me want to hear more, I feel like today's vote is, if people felt like last week's vote was fast, I feel like this one is, because not much has changed from last week to this week and there's still, I still have questions across the board when it comes to the fire department, I feel like there's, I still want to know where the administration stands on a lot of stuff, when we're looking at Station Seven, when we're looking at two oh seven As, it's, it's, I'm concerned this one piece of the puzzle doesn't take us in the step in the direction we need. I will be changing my vote tonight from last week, but I, I really wish we took the time to put it in committee like Roberts rule says we can, so I think it would have done a better service to the union and to everybody had we had more time to discuss things, but that's where I stand on my vote tonight, that is all.
Robert?
I, I just don't understand why we can't put it in committee, then discuss it. I, I don't know why we get to bring it to a vote.
You brought it up last week.
I understand that.
Right, so now you've made a motion to reconsider, a motion to reconsider it, or vote, that's what the.
No, you can, it takes it back to exactly how it was.
I even asked for it in committee, reintroduce it as a first item, as a new piece.
Well, we voted.
You said you didn't even know that your name's on it.
Yeah, guys, we're not gonna get in the back and forth.
I mean, and then you haven't voted on it, so don't you think that you should reintroduce it as a new piece and figure out who the sponsors want to be in the actual legislation?
Well, that's why I wanted.
I mean, that would be a little more common sense, because again, your name's still on it.
That's why I would like.
So do you want to vote your name as a sponsor? I mean, because that's really what we're here to discuss, so I mean.
Yeah, if you want to defeat it, you can defeat it and then reintroduce it, a new piece, so.
If anybody's got their questions, you got the chief there, you got the head of the union there, ask their questions.
Can we do that first before we vote on?
Well, yeah, but I mean, we, yeah, it's a special meeting, but we, last week we had the chief and the chief, you had quite a.
Yeah, but we didn't have the union there, they were on the way to the church.
They voted.
But that's, but that's my point, actually you have a committee meeting and I discussed it, I mean.
Well, you really need the administration there to see what, what they actually want.
You have these guys seated at the table who really want it, I mean, why do we have discussion now, it's a special meeting, technically your rules don't even apply, do you even have these type of discussions, do they have outside entities that can speak?
That's, I know, not to be out of order, but that's where, we can commit it, that's what Roberts rule says you can do, this legislation exists as if it was.
But, I don't want, I don't want any visual, what's committee? It was in for two weeks, the initial time it came, it was in committee, it came out and, and quite frankly, I believe you seconded to bring it out of committee, I believe at the meeting, I think Jack seconded first, and you, you were second to bring it out for a vote.
For re, so yes, we, we.
No, for the last week's, last week's meeting, we voted when it got turned down, Jack, Jack said bring it out, you seconded it.
Okay.
So you were in favor of bringing it out to vote that.
Right.
I didn't say to bring it out, I would have left it in.
So none of that, none of that changes tonight, that when a piece of legislation is reconsidered.
Well, I understand that, but now we're talking about what we did last week, so I, I mean, it's not the end of the world if we vote how we vote tonight, but next week somebody puts a new piece in and you put it in.
And then we'll have the judge here, so if we have questions.
Introduce it at the next meeting.
If that's your beef, that I didn't put.
Okay.
But no, but I'm frustrated because these are Roberts rules of order.
They're not, we can call Roberts.
But we're not, Katie, I agree with you.
Yes, we do.
Katie, council, council person, I agree with you, but we're not talking about that, we're talking what we did last week. He, he, I would have left it in committee till we had a whole meeting about it, I didn't ask.
Well, we have the chance to right now because we are reconsidering.
Yeah, but we're reconsidering what we did last week.
And this.
Now we'll bring it up again, what's the difference?
This legislation is out on the floor as if, just like last week when it was out on the floor, it could have been recommitted and we have that chance, and as long as there's legislation in committee, then we can keep talking about this conversation.
Yeah, let's get the vote on the floor.
I think it's premature.
Anyone else want to quantify the votes?
Yeah, I'd like to qualify.
Councilman Beatrice?
Okay. So, there's a couple of things, every person in this room, including the chief and the fire chief, I talked to each one of yous, I talked to you two guys in the hallway before the vote, I talked to Joe, I was totally against this, okay? I should have listened to my mother from when I was a little kid, she always told me, don't change your, don't change your mind, I was terrible in school and I would come home and I had this test and she, I changed my, changed my answer, she always told me, don't change it, okay? And I gotta be honest with you, I tried to be loyal, I love you guys, I just, I, I, I just didn't vote the way I wanted, I didn't sleep for two nights afterward, okay? And I'm just gonna give you a couple of reasons, a couple of reasons that really bothered me and I told you. So, two months ago, they were trying to get rid of your position, okay? And I fought for it to say, I don't think you should ever get rid of any position, okay? My first vote ever on the common council in two thousand nineteen was in that room back there when they tried to get rid of the, the clerk, okay? And they wanted to bring Melissa and I'm very glad she's here, but I didn't take a councilman's job to get rid of positions, okay? And the second, the other part of this whole deal is the more I think about it, okay, you guys both said it doesn't make a difference, the chief fire marshal and the fire marshal can do the same, same things, okay? However, when you read our code, everything is chief fire marshal, not fire marshal, all right? The other part of it is, you know what, down the road, all right, that's a promotional position for somebody who could be this year, next year, that wants to move up and, and to me, we're taking it away. I, I, I think that should be an incentive, we should keep it there, I think if you have the entitlement only, okay, of a chief fire marshal, you're the chief, you can control what they do, you got twenty inspections, you need ten and ten done, you could tell that guy, even though you're the chief fire marshal, you go do that, okay? And, and the last thing is, like I said, there's more to this and I don't feel that I have all the real information on why we're getting rid of this. And I am changing my vote and I'm sorry, I tried to be loyal to you guys, but I, I just don't think that it's the right thing to do at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else?
I guess I'll say my piece.
Yeah.
Just briefly, I mentioned at the last meeting that being in the military, I learned to work the chain of command and I felt at the time that that was the right thing to do, but, but I was, I was sort of incorrect in one thing, when you're in the military, that you and the soldiers, when you get into private government, I was ignoring, but when you get into government outside the military, you have three labor, you have, you have three layers, you got the, the executive layer, you got, you got the firemen and then you have the union. That's something that, before I made that decision, I really didn't take into effect and discuss it with them. So, I'm not saying that this legislation's dead, I'm not saying it's gonna come back, but what I'm saying is that, you know, it doesn't hurt to step back, we're gonna be here tomorrow, we're gonna be here next week, we're gonna be here next year, no need to rush this, we'll take a look at it, but I want to talk to the union first and I think I've met one mark and we're gonna, we're gonna have further meetings with the chief when something was set up, so I could get a little more knowledgeable on this, so when I do make a final decision, you know, I'm gonna take the executive team, I'm gonna take the firemen, and I'm gonna take the union, and then I'm gonna piece it out and decide which way I want to vote. So for right now, I'm gonna knock it out, but down the road, we'll, we'll bring it back possibly and, but I'll have the information I need to make a, a sound and knowledgeable decision. That's it, thank you.
Any other council members? Dennis?
One of the things that troubled me, because I did vote to get rid of the position last week, and that was based on what I heard at the meeting. I'm kinda upset at the union because I used to be a union rep, anytime you send me a letter talking about you disappointed in me because I am part of the council and none of you are here to put your words in and say anything to us, to let us know how you felt, and I get a letter talking about you at somewhere else, well, you should have had somebody here last week when we voted, you know what I'm saying? If you, if it was that important to you and important to the people that you represent, you make sure somebody's here, even if you have firefighters here to speak at public comment, you have somebody here to speak on your side, to talk about what it's gonna do to them if they don't have the position. All we heard last week was from the chief and a little bit from the deputy chief, and I was disappointed when I got the letters saying that you were disappointed. I'm disappointed at the union and I want to hear what you guys have to say, I want to hear your side of it, but I wish you would have brought it to us earlier, that we didn't have to do a reconsider tonight, and that's my feelings on it, and I don't know how anybody else feels on the council, they could feel how they want, but that's how I feel, if you gonna send me letters like that, saying you were somewhere else when you, hey, should have had somebody here from your, from your executive team or committee to talk, you should have had them here last week. And I am gonna vote to reconsider, because I want to hear what you have to say, but I'm just giving you warning, next time, please make sure that you get somebody here when they're supposed to be here, if you want something done, because like Joe said, the thing was out for two weeks and we've been considering it for two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Your votes please.
Is the vote to reconsider, right?
No, no, this is the vote on the chief's.
No, a no is a vote to reconsider the way it is right now.
No is gonna defeat it.
No, a no will defeat it and that's what keep it.
Yeah, five yeas, guys, five yeas will pass to remove the chief fire marshal position, five nays will defeat to keep the chief fire. Yeah. Five yes, guys. Five yes will pass to remove the chief fire marshal position. Five nays will defeat to keep the chief fire marshal position.
So if you want to vote no.
So five yes.
If you're the chief fire marshal, vote yes. It's still gonna be the chief.
I will say this.
If you want to put it back the way it was before we voted, you gotta vote no on this.
Alright. Alright, vote.
Votes?
Did you turn me off?
Joe.
Eight yeas. Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, alright.